Let's pray. Father of the Lord, we come this morning thanking you for blessing us to see another day, or to come out to conduct business of the county. We thank you Father for the privilege to serve as citizens of this county. We thank you for our nation, all in our state, blessed now in all that we do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We're gonna call our May 1st, 2013 County Commissioner meeting to order. And first item on our agenda will be to approve the minutes of April 3rd, 2013. Are there any corrections or discussions?
I just saw one thing, and it had to do with the Brian Starnes contract. I forgot who it, I didn't mark it. And just that it would reflect that it was a one-year contract. It didn't state that in there, I just wanna...
What page, John?
I can't remember, I read it, but I didn't mark it.
Twelve forty, middle of the page, or a little below the middle.
Right where it's drafted, kinda like the D.
Yeah.
Also on that same page, under Citizens Comment, Jeffrey Merritt stated Chairman Jordan's term will end on DSS Board on May 30. Another commissioner will need to be appointed to the position, or Chairman Jordan reappointed.
Yes.
And any other corrections? Not, we'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as corrected.
Does it move?
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Alright, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda would be to accept the agenda as presented. Are there any changes? Alright, if there are no changes, we're entertaining a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Does it move?
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Thank you. Alright, the next item would be our delegations, our citizen comments. Alright, Earl Remp.
Earl Roundtree, Suttonbury, North Carolina. I thought I'd come over here because some people had been wondering if I was still living. And, you know, when Linda Hoffler was running for County Commissioner, Linda, if I misunderstood you, you can, it won't hurt my feelings for you to correct me, but I hope this phone don't start ringing because I forgot to turn it off. So if you hear a country song going on, it would be me, because this is nowhere. Two things Linda said that I took to heart in her stump speech, only two things. Maybe she said more, these are I remember, was transparency. And the other one was the fact that Gates County was a small, poor county. I don't know if she used that word, but limited resources, that sounds better. I think that's more descriptive. I don't think we are poor. We get that, been told that, but we're not. But, you know, I just wanted to kinda bring this up. It seems like budget time is constant. The government is always in a budget, and I don't understand that. I'm never in a budget. I get hungry, I go buy food, you know. I got on three vehicles and two of them in the shop right now. And I think I'll need to go buy the fourth one, but I just do it. But anyway, the point is, Passapatanke County last year, I don't know about this year, published report was seventy-four million dollars in debt. And I did the figures based on our debt per capita, in Passapatanke's per capita. And they are way ahead of us. And here they got all these things, the Super Walmart, the sales tax on the Super Walmart would support our budget. And yet, they're coming in there this year, and I think I mentioned this to the county manager, they're publishing, the county manager now is asking maybe a four to five cent tax increase. But at the same time, when you look at the paper, they got all these other projects. Now they want to build a baseball stadium, and they, so, you know, Linda made a point to me, and I hope the rest of you know that, is she said, "Live within our means." I've known Linda since she was about this tall, and, but some things I didn't know about her. So I called up somebody that knew her very well, and I said, "Is Linda kinda frugal with the money?" And they laughed, and they said, "Linda's very frugal with the money." And I said, "Well, that's exactly the kinda person I won't send on the commission." But that's not why I came here today, but it was on my mind because it, we always see people coming in and just starting begging for the money again. And the county manager and the finance officer and the rest of you are coming up with a budget. But I think our tax rate's plenty high. I don't think at all we have a income problem. We always have a spending problem. And y'all have done a good job, I mean, I'll say that. You're not coming out here with a lot of new projects, but you know I will hate to spend money. The other thing I come in here to say was I meant to bring my balloon, but I didn't have time, I had a couple of phone calls. I always heard the phrase, "Going over like a lid balloon." I don't know if y'all ever heard that or not. You know, a balloon, you fill it up with air and it kinda floats around, put helium, it goes to the ceiling. You fill it, put a fishing sinker in it and drop it, it hits the floor. When I was gonna do that, I like to do little things, you know, going over like a lid balloon. But I did meet with the county manager and Henry, and I wanted to make a public statement of this, so, you know, the public would know this, not that it makes any difference to me one way or the other. But I did offer to try, in a fee of maybe a dollar a year plus expenses, to try to do something about jump-starting our commerce and industrial development in this county. Back about forty years ago, I brought it up, and after that time Ray Felton got on board, and he had brought it up, and I don't think that Ray and I, the one ever, I know we didn't ever get very far, because my idea was the county should be budgeting a little money toward this. If you don't budget money toward capital improvements, if you're in business. One of the biggest two corp, one, two of the biggest corporations in this nation, in the world, world, I meant to say world, is in the most recognized logo. One of two of the most, and I know y'all wanna answer this real quick, but Coca-Cola, and you know that famous Coca-Cola signature, and the golden arches. They're recognized the world over. And yet, both of those companies together spend billions in order to keep that product out there. So we are in competition with every county, every municipality in this state and in this nation. And if we sit back and absolutely ever do nothing, they gonna get what little bit of commerce is out there. It's a dog-eat-dog world. And I still think, and like I said, I just wanted the county to know, I'm not no genius at this thing, but I do have been around, and I honestly don't think I'm as dumb as some people think I am. But I did offer that, it don't make one, I guess it kinda went over like that lid balloon, so that's why I was gonna do it. The offer's off the table, it doesn't bother me one way or the other. But I still think, and that comes back to our Commerce Park. Now, I'm not gonna make any public comments on this. I did meet with the county manager. We're lucky to have a county manager who has experienced in being in a squeeze situation, and I brought that up because he was in Southampton County, and he was the tobacco industry to the west, were getting money that he wasn't getting because he was in a peanut area, and the tidewater development seems to stop at the Suffolk City line. And so he's already experienced in knowing how tough it is. But it is something out here that if we don't fight to get something down here, the, y'all know the facts, but now on what's happened at the Commerce Park. And in closing, and this is one of the reasons I came, I want to publicly say that people in Gates County should thank Chuck Brothers for the volunteer work that he did in trying to track down where we were on the system that lived. And I'm assumed that all of you know this, but now, and I said, "I'm not gonna make a public comment," other than the fact to say that the Commerce Park is for sale. Y'all all know, but now that the man that started it, Kim Old, pulled out. He had no, obviously no faith in his own project, Dewey wouldn't have pulled out. I never would have pulled out of any project that I had faith in and thought I was gonna make money. So this is something that we as citizens and you the commissioners are gonna have to face, and let's see some transparency. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Earl. Okay, next item on the agenda would be our administrative reports. You have in your package the county manager's report. And county manager, do you have any discussion you wanna give us on that?
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the board, I'd like to present to you the county manager's report, the administrative report for the county. You'll find in this packet my report, as well as the report for all the different departments. Be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Just had one question while the board is looking over their information. On sheet two of the county manager's report, we mentioned a damaged claim at 271 in US 158. Are you permitted to give us any information on what that claim is and what we're working to resolve in that?
Yes, sir. During the completion of the sewer project, a contractor had to, of course, bury the sewer line in the right-of-way, in the state right-of-way of the roadway there, US 158. When he planted it back, it did not resume what it was before. So the property owner was left with a front yard that is not the same as it was before the project began, which is a clear difference than what the property owner expected and what the county expects so far as being able to return things to their natural state after a project is done. And what I mean by that is the landscaping of the grass and the grading is rough, and it's hard for the homeowner to maintain their lawn. They have approached us, and we have taken pictures, and we have relayed these concerns to the architect, who was in turn via our process that's established with the owner, the architect, and the contractor. The architect has relayed those concerns to the contractor. The contract is not closed because this claim is out there, as well as some change orders that remain pending. And it is our intent that the contractor address this claim as a bona fide damage claim and make that property owner whole and repair their property and estate in a manner that was before the project began.
Okay. Alright, appreciate that. Any further comments?
On the library project where it says final payment and reconciliation, have we made that payment?
No, sir, I don't.
Still not, okay. We still on track for the eighty-nine or eighty-seven, that's gonna be, that we're gonna be positive.
I think, I think it's gonna be very close.
Okay.
We'll get those numbers to you as soon as we close that project, give you a final report of what it stands.
Very good.
Alright, our next item would be our finance report from our finance director.
Mr. Chairman, you'll find in this packet the finance report for the quarter. And I'll be pleased to answer the questions that you may have in that regard as well.
We'll get the budget amendments later. Okay, we have our tax report from our tax assessor administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I, first of all, want to apologize, in the packets of reports that you have from the department here, you're missing one from me because I was out of town at that time. And so I apologize for not getting that into Diane's, so she could put it with your packets. But to give you a little bit of an update on where we stand with things in the office, we are continuing to work on getting property, personal property listed for the upcoming 2013 billing. We have had a little change with the motor vehicle, the vehicle tag system, which we were very disappointed to get this information. It has been put off for a couple of months. Instead of starting with the July 1 renewals, it now will start with the September renewals. The reason for this ha, actually has to do with the auto dealers. A lot of them apparently use online services for tagging and registering vehicles with DMV. And apparently, these online services are not up to par yet as far as testing their software and seeing that it is gonna work, that we can move forward with this. So as of right now, we will actually be starting with the new system with the September renewals instead of the July renewals. And we, we were very disappointed to hear that, but anyway.
Will that result in any loss of revenue, potential loss of revenue?
It will not, well, not really in a loss of revenue. It is gonna put us in a position where in our upcoming budget, we had only budgeted to go through those June renewals on our old system and, you know, printing the bills and so forth. It is gonna put us in a position of having to deal with two more months of billing, the postage, and that sort of thing. So I don't really see a revenue loss. We won't quite get some revenue in as quick as maybe we would have, you know, in those two months, but not really a loss.
When it, we were actually in a meeting last week, the commissioners were, where that issue was addressed. And they were very apologetic about the issue that came up. Will there be any retro, are they gonna, when they bring it on in September, are they gonna try and go all the way back to June?
Now, what we will do, we will actually go back and bill our July and August renewals on our current system.
Okay.
Not the new system. And, which is, like I said, we had already spent, you know, a couple of weeks working with that new system on, and had our July renewals ready, you know, to go back to DMV. So it's very, very disappointing, and we like the new system a great deal, so we're not real crazy about having to work with the old system a couple more months. But we're just hoping that this isn't gonna be an avenue to put it off any further. So that concerns us a little bit. Also, this week, we will be sending out a group of letters to the taxpayers that still owe 2011 and 2012 taxes. These will be that initial foreclosure letter, giving them fifteen days to either set up a payment plan or pay those two years' taxes, or it will be turned over to Zikeas. And with your tax collector's report, and I know you haven't had time to really look at this since yesterday was the end of the month, our overall collection rate right now is ninety-two point six nine compared to last year at this time of ninety-two point three two. So we are still a little bit ahead of things with that. However, I want to call your attention to the collection rate for the real and personal levy. This collection rate that you see there is actually the collection rate that you're gonna need, that your focus is going to be more on from here on out versus the overall when we start, stop collecting the motor vehicle bills. And this will actually be the collection rate that we will project, that you will be able to use with the budget as well, because those motor vehicle bills will no longer be included in that. So from here on out, with the upcoming budget, that will be the figure that we will focus on, which will allow us to use a higher collection percentage with our budget, which will allow us to budget more of our funds than what we've been able to in the past, which is, is a good thing. And also, at the bottom of the page, if you will look at the figures, we have received right at twelve thousand dollars from Zikeas Legal Services, and a little over thirty-eight hundred dollars from Mr. Ellis's office. Mr. Ellis still has quite a number of our accounts, and we have finally been able to get an update from them as to where those accounts stand. And we have those in a spreadsheet, and I will be emailing those to y'all for your review. And if you have any questions once you receive that, please let either myself or Ms. Harold know, and we'll be glad to answer those questions for you. Do I have any questions on the report thus far?
What is the approximate number that Travis Ellis has?
It's probably twenty-five or thirty at this point. And the spreadsheet that we will send you will be all accounts that we have turned over to him, and those that have been closed or gone on to the courthouse steps for foreclosure, that will be indicated on there. And also, the amount of attorney fees that are due at this time. And there had been some discussion, and to be honest with you, I can't remember if it was really with the board, or maybe just some discussion with myself and our prior manager, maybe Mr. Jordan, or about possibly if y'all were interested, depending on what attorney fees were due, we can go ahead and pay Travis Ellis those attorney fees, get those accounts back in our office, and turn them over to Zikeas. That's, but I, I do not believe, I think we have serval on there that maybe those attorney fees at this point are like at a hundred and forty-five dollars. But that would just be something that you as a board would have to make the decision if you wanted to do that.
Is that for each account that has one forty-five?
And you'll, you'll see that, and I'll email that spreadsheet to you this afternoon, and you'll, you'll see that from the spreadsheet. And like I say, if you have any questions or concerns with it, if you will email those to Ms. Harold or myself, and maybe we can get a better report together for you, that we can have a little better discussion at the next board meeting.
And I think the thing we might wanna consider is the fact that going forward with Travis, you know, we're incurring travel expense and then his commission fee, if you will, for administration.
It's, it's a much more expensive process for the taxpayer or us in the end, depending on what does happen. And we have very much enjoyed working with Zikeas Legal Services. It's been a very good communication between both offices. And as of this point, we have collected a lot of money because of what they're doing for us, and have yet to have to take a property to the courthouse steps, which is, we, we don't like to end up there if we can help it. Any other questions?
Is this effectiveness, Zikeas, is it because of letter writing, or just staying on top of it, or?
I think it's letter writing and how quick the process goes. It's not like they receive a letter and then maybe a year later something else is sent. It's once they enter that process, it's, you know, come on, let's go. And I think the realization of what's going on hits them. And they, in most cases, thank goodness, they do come in and pay.
Probably act a little bit more like a debt collector.
Exactly, in a, in a way. And I think the taxpayers too are realizing that when they get a foreclosure letter because of that consistency with Zikeas, that they need to take it serious. That it's not something that's just gonna, they're getting a letter and it's gonna fall through the cracks.
Alright, any other comments, Missus?
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks. Okay, our next item on the agenda would be, you have in your package your personnel report. If you've gone over it, are there any things you wanna mention on that? Departmental reports, correspondence, articles of interest in county calendar. Are there any questions on those? If not... Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to draw your attention to the county calendar and upcoming appointment that we're working very hard to try to, to make with the NCDOT and, and this governing body, you all as a board. And that is the situation on US 13 and 158 and NC 137. We're looking at the, the week of the thirteenth, Monday the thirteenth, Friday the seventeenth. We are, we've got a date that we're attempting to nail down, but we will be hopefully confirming that with the NCDOT and making that confirmation with each of you as, as board members, and then getting with the press and the public to, to get that word out to everyone. Tentatively, we're looking at the Euro voluntary fire department to hold that meeting. It'll be a stakeholder meeting, very much informal, to come in and to see the project and ask questions one-on-one from about four to six, to allow the working man and woman to come in and, and ask those questions. But that, that will be forthcoming later this week, hopefully.
Thank you. County manager. Alright, the next item on our agenda would be the old business. And we have to discuss and make some appointments on the various boards and commissions that we have. And I think probably the best way to do it is to go down the list. We will need to make some appointments. If we have more than one candidate, you know, we can go through the nomination process. But if there's only one, we would just want to go through, make a motion to accept that candidate. The first commission that we have is the Alamoor Commission, which my term expires in December. I don't think we need to address that right now. Let me get my other sheet. I said Alamoor Commission, but I believe the ABC Board is also one we want to address. Okay. Alright. If you get this sheet here, I think that's the one you want, boards and committees. That's, I believe that's it. The ABC Board, Mr. Perry Ura, these are three-year terms, and his term expired last year on June 30th. And we need to reappoint him. Mr. GP Kietrel, Kietrel's term expires on June of this year. And we need to reappoint him, but there are no other candidates that I'm aware of for these boards. And what is your pleasure for reappointment?
I make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Perry Ura and William Sheldon.
Oh, GP Kietrel.
GP, GP Kietrel.
Yeah, let's see if we got all, if we'll use, use this sheet here.
I don't...
See if we got all the same pages.
I don't have that sheet.
Okay, I think... Okay. Actually, item seven.
Okay, it's, it's the next, next item after this year.
I have this, but we're not going in that order.
Okay.
It is in the packet.
Okay, if you, if, I think it's a little farther back, but...
I don't see that. That looks like it.
Okay, I got it now.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion on the floor to reappoint Mr. Perry Ura, GP Kietrel, for new three-year terms.
Second motion.
Motion's second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Alright, we're notified then. The next would be our Alamoor Rural Planning Organization, known as the RPO. Our county planner, Ms. Morgan Jethrow, was on that board. It is my recommendation that until we get someone else to replace that position at the county manager, it would be, we put in that position to represent us on that board.
That's a recommendation.
That's my recommendation.
Recommendation. Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion... Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on that recommendation.
I'll second that.
All right, so motion is second, that the county manager will be placed on the Albemarle Rural Planning Organization for the county. All in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed nay.
Mr. Chairman, the next one there, the TAC, they meet on the same day and one meets right before the other board. And it's also, they sort of go hand in hand and that's why we see Ms. Jethro's name there as well. But it's my understanding that you, that you don't, that one of those is like an option thing? I know there's some requirements, like on the RPO. But on the TAC board, I don't know if that is a requirement. Do you know, Diane, if that's a required? And she was doing both, so, okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also make a motion that the county manager serve on that board on a temporary basis also.
Motion is second, county manager. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye. All in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed nay. All right, the next board is the Albemarle Resource Conservation and Development Council, known as RCND, it's a four-year term. Ms. Jethro was also on that board. There again, I believe it would be county manager recommendation. My recommendation to put the county manager on that until a replacement is determined. What is your pleasure?
Second.
Hello, all right.
Second.
All right, so motion is second, that county manager will replace Ms. Jethro on that board. Okay, the next one is the Department of Social Services. My term expires June thirtieth. I have expressed the willingness to be reappointed if that's the pleasure of the board. I don't know if anyone else, if any other commissioners have a desire to serve. But...
I make a motion to Mr. Henry Jordan be reappointed to the DSS Board.
Second.
All right, so motion is second, that Commissioner Jordan be reappointed. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. All right, the next board is the East Carolina Behavioral Health Board. The board makeup has changed and we normally have one commissioner on that board. But now we have to have a person with a financial background and a person with a medical field background. We don't automatically get a commissioner anymore, is that right?
That's true.
That's right. Okay, so, Diane, do you have those names for me? I think we, for the East Carolina, we had Mr. Dan Askew or John Horr or...
Or John Horr and the other one was Leslie Blow.
Leslie Blow, we didn't have any options for that?
No.
Okay. All right, what we currently have for the financial fulfillment of the position, Mr. Dan Askew has been, I believe he's been contacted? He's not, okay, we could ask him. And Commissioner Horr, we feel that you probably could step in those shoes a little bit if you were willing to serve.
Mr. Jordan, I make a recommendation that you ask Mr. Askew. If Mr. Askew declines, I will gladly accept, sir.
All right. Sounds like you have a...
Want to spread the wealth around.
All right. Would you want to make that a motion?
Yes, sir, I'll make that a motion.
Okay. Let's have a motion to contact Mr. Dan Askew, with him to serve on that board as our financial representative. We have a second.
Second.
All right, now, motion is second, any discussion?
Let me add one more name, I'd like Ms. Michelle Sawyer. I would like to have, you know, she is...
Well...
If, I mean if...
You want to rescind your first motion and make a new motion?
Yeah, I'd like to do that, Mr. Askew, Ms. Sawyer and then myself.
All right, one, two, three. All right. Commissioner Horr has rescinded his motion. The new motion would be that we contact Mr. Dan Askew, Ms. Michelle Sawyer and Commissioner Horr would be the third representative if so needed. All right.
I second that.
We have a motion is second, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Okay. So one of those will be our representative. All right, we also need a medical representative on that board. And Mrs. Leslie Blow has been contacted and she accepted.
She has not returned.
She's not returned. All right. I would also recommend that we contact Dr. Pollitt, the medical center. Any other suggestions?
Are we looking at a doctor, a nurse, or what?
Well, Leslie Blow is a nurse, Dr. Pollitt, she's with our health care center. It has to be a medical field person, that's the new requirement.
We're looking for these appointments by July one, is that fair to say?
October.
All of these?
No.
Just East Carolina.
Okay, all right, so we have some time. Are we looking for, I mean, I know we have time on this one, are we looking for a list of candidates like we just did on the other one? Contact this one, this one, this one, or do we want to, do we want to contact, the names have been mentioned, and then come back to a drawing board?
I think if we have, we don't know if they're gonna accept and...
Because I have one other name that I'd like to mention.
I think that'd be fine.
Heather Boyce, she's a nurse.
All right, did you want to, any further discussion, Joe?
Well, I got another name too.
All right.
Lindsey Weller.
Lindsey?
Lindsey Weller. She's at King's Dog. I might be a problem with that, but...
All right, we have Leslie Blow, number one. Number two is Heather Boyce. Number three is Lindsey Weller and number four, Dr. Pollitt. Do we want to make that a motion to contact those and whoever accepts in that order? Or did we want to come back and choose between the four?
Is a clerk going to be the one to contact them, is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we have a clerk contact those candidates in that order until we get a candidate that's willing to serve. Make that a motion, sir.
All right. Motion to make contact with the names that have been designated and until one is found to serve.
Second.
All right, so motion is second, all in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, thank you. All right, our Gates County Library Board of Trustees have a six-year term. Ms. Helen Uer, term expired in November. And Mrs. Peggy Leffler resigned, which her term would not have expired until 2016. Ms. Helen Uer is willing to be reappointed. And we do need a replacement for Ms. Leffler, all right. Okay, so the only item we need to take action on is reappointment of Mrs. Helen P. Uer.
I move that we reappoint Helen Uer.
Second.
All right, so motion is second, all in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay. Also, Ms. Uer is serving on the Albemarle Regional Library Board and we need to reappoint her, her term expired also in November of last year.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Ms. Uer if she so desires to that board.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
All right, so motion is second, all in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay. The Gates County Nursing Home Advisory Committee, it's a three-year term. Ms. Nickens has resigned, do we have any replacements? Okay. All right, the next board appointment. Okay, Economic Improvement Council. Sure did, I missed that one, I'm sorry. If you go back, Economic Improvement Council, EIC, that's a two-year term. Mr. Robert Williams currently serves on that committee or board and his term expires in August 2013 and he's willing to be reappointed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Robert Williams to a new term.
Second.
All right, so, motion is second, all in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. All right, we have a Human Relations Commission, which is a three-year term. Jewel Harold, JB Freeman and John Jones, terms expires in October. I believe all those are, they're willing to serve again. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to all the three, Mrs. Harold, Mr. Freeman, Mr. James be reappointed.
Second.
All right, so motion is second, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Thank you.
I do.
All right, the last one, I believe, will be the Gates County Planning Board.
Mrs. Jordan, may I make a comment about that?
Yes.
We have tried traditionally to have a geographical diversity on boards. So when we are making our appointments, we need to consider that. At the present time, six of the, I mean, three of the six are from the Uer area. So we need to make sure that as we are reappointing, that we make sure that we are more diverse. We do not have representation at the present time from Gatesville, Reynoldson and, well, of course, Hobbs will be vacant when Lynn leaves.
He does not want to be reappointed?
He has, he can serve two terms and he's served a second. Rita Lane is working on someone for the Gates area. For Gates representation, we just don't have any representation for the Hobsaw area. John Carter was feeling Linda Hopps' notice by term, so he can't...
Can't be reappointed, I mean, he can't be appointed till full term.
Right, he can be appointed till full term at this time.
And he's willing?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Carter into another term.
Second.
All right, so motion is second, we reappoint Mr. Carter to the second term, all in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Now, Rita Lane and Lynn Hobbs, we do not have candidates at this time?
Not at this time. We're hoping we will have a better night meeting.
Okay. Have a night meeting. Did we put a notice out in paper for that? We may have some that want to serve. Okay. I think we ought to put something in the Gates County index of those openings. All right, that completes, all right. Okay, all right. We have the Board of Adjustments. Mr. Dan Lane's first-year term expires June of this year. And Mr. Terry Uer, first term expires in June as well. And Mr. William Harold is in his second year, Mr. Graham Hawkins, so they have to be replaced. We want to address Mr. Dan Lane and Mr. Terry Uer, is it the pleasure of the board to reappoint them for another term?
Mr. Chairman, if they're willing to serve, I would agree that we reappoint them, make that a motion.
All right, the motion that Mr. Dan Lane, Mr. Terry Uer be appointed for a second term.
Second.
All right, so motion is second, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. All right, for replacements for Mr. William Harold and Mr. Graham Hawkins.
Mr. Chairman, with that, if we're going to run something in the paper for the planning board, would we want to run that in conjunction?
Yeah, let's do that and we can come back and address that. Okay. All right. At our last meeting, we were tasked to, as a board, to appoint a committee for the Animal Welfare Advisory Committee. And it was published for applications. And the applications we received, they were looked over. And these are the appointments that have been made. One appointment by the Uer District Commissioner and that name being... What are their names?
Dr. Johnson.
Dr. Peggy Johnston, she has accepted. That was Mr. John Horr. The Hobbsville District, Commissioner Hoffler, Mr. Kevin McGinnis. And the Gates District, Ms. Carol Witt, Ken Jernigan. And the Gatesville District, Ms. Lulu Uer, Commissioner Jack Owens. And the Sunbury District, Bill Bailey. Doug Bailey. Mr. Jordan. And the Tri-County Animal Shelter.
Dana Goheen.
Dana Goheen. And the Health Department, Health Department appointment. Ralph Hollwell. And the Sheriff Department, Department. Captain Vinda Parker. And the county manager.
Jared Harold.
Jared Harold. All right, Tri-County Livestock Agent. Those are the appointments. What is the pleasure of the board? To approve those?
Make a motion that we accept the said names of appointments for the animal board.
Second.
All right, so motion is second, that we will accept these names as presented as our committee for the Animal Welfare Advisory in developing the new ordinance or advised ordinance. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to draw your attention to the Board of Adjustment momentarily. The vice chair of that board was appointed as an alternate member, and that board self-elected to promote her to a regular position. And she is serving as the vice chair. And that appointment needs to be rectified in some manner. An alternate cannot serve as an officer, they're only there as an alternate. They cannot be self-elevated, if you will. That needs to be a board of commissioners' action. And you see that there under the Board of Adjustment. I want to draw your attention to that, to make that a correct situation moving forward.
Is the board a complete, I mean, how many members are on the board?
It's got a number board, right?
I mean, was there a slot for her to slip in?
There is. I'll draw your attention to item number six in the agenda, and there's a listing of those board members. I will pull it up here if I can find it. Those board members, as they stand now, are Mr. David Boyce, chairman, Mrs. Kathy Radmore, vice chairman, Mr. Dan Lang, Mr. Terry Uier, Mr. William Harold, Mr. Graham Hawkins as the alternate, and Mr. Joseph Perry as the alternate. But our records indicate that the vice chair, Mrs. Kathy Radmore, was appointed as an alternate by this body, and that that board elevated her to a regular member's position, and then voted her as vice chair, which that board cannot promote an alternate to fill a regular position. That appointment has to be made by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so the option we have, well, what we have to do today is to either appoint her as a regular board member, and then we'll have a vacant alternate, or appoint someone else. Okay. We will need to appoint Ms. Radmore as a regular board member, or someone else that's an alternate. What is the pleasure?
The timeline on that appointment, mightn't quite, do you know what that is? We do it now?
So, looking at the structure of this board, Mrs. Harold went to the alternate position.
Well, he's not serving.
My understanding, Mrs. Commissioner, is that another alternate was appointed, and that her elevation was never ratified. So there really are three alternates, but that board doesn't consider her an alternate. And I can't tell you how that occurred, but there are two alternates whose terms are expiring.
Now, William Harold was listed as an alternate, that's his own board.
Was listed as an alternate as well.
When we talked to the chairman, he states that it wasn't Mr. Harold, he was a regular member.
So we have Graham Hawkins as an alternate, and Joseph Perry as an alternate. That's what we're showing here.
I'll bring that to your attention. We'll seek to clarify this issue and get a full understanding of the timeline from the minutes, and we'll bring that back to you at the May evening meeting.
Okay. All right. That should conclude the appointments to boards and commissions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
As looking through the notes on these different, I mean, different committees, if you look at the Historic Court Heist Committee, several names were left off.
Yes. Thank you for reminding me. I made a note of that.
Mrs. Barbara, Mrs. Barbara Tody and Adam Williams were both left off.
Yes.
Barbara Tody and Adam Williams.
And also Commissioner John Horace. There was some, there was a discussion on three commissioners being on that committee. And my initial task was to be moderator, to get it going, which I did. I have no voting rights. But we do have Commissioner Hohler and Commissioner Horace on there. And I've kind of been just sitting in, observing, but we do have three commissioners there. So as the board currently stands, John Horace is not recognized on there, nor am I. But
We do need to state though that we are non-voting members.
Right, well, now you could vote, but I-
No, I'm not going to vote until I get here.
All right. What is the pleasure of the board to appoint? Well, not appoint, but to clarify Commissioner Horace's position on the board.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to continue yourself as a
Observer.
Observer or moderator?
I would continue to attend. We have a chairman, you know, the moderators is no longer needed unless something came up. But I started with them, and I think that it would be beneficial that I stay informed.
I agree.
And so I would like to continue attending at least as a non-voting and non-participating official participation.
And Commissioner Horace, you haven't voted on anything to this point?
No.
Well, I would open to the board that they, you're adding to the dialogue of the meeting, so you are participating.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I would like to use the word observers, but if you guys are, if you're-
Let's see, what kind of manager, what are your concerns with this board makeup?
Anytime that a majority of a board meets, since the Board of Commissioners is a five-member board, anytime the majority meets, it's really a public meeting of the board if you're acting as board members. Now, there are all sorts of exclusions and exemptions. For instance, if you had a social event, or a Christmas party, or that sort of thing, that you're free to interact as private citizens. So if you're not appointed to a board and you're acting as a private citizen, there may be some protections under the law there for you. But you need to be aware that if county business is being discussed, and the majority of you are in a room, that that is a general statute concern. But you're certainly free, and I'd refer to our legal counsel in that regard to interpret it more fully for you, but you're certainly free to be private residents and to participate in the community, and to buy barbecue chicken plates at the volunteer fire department and the Ruriken Club, and to participate in the community. So it sounds like that's what's going on here, that y'all have a definite interest in it, and you're not conducting county business, and you're not voting in that regard. But we just need to be careful that we're fully compliant with the general statutes.
So it would be your recommendation that we do not officially appoint Commissioner Horace on that board, but if he wants to attend, certainly we could do that. All right.
I like that concept.
All right. All we need to add is Ms. Tody, Barbara Tody, and Mr. Williams. And that'll complete that board. All right. I don't think we need no action on that. Anything else before we move on? Okay, the next item on our agenda would be the consideration of Budget Amendment Forty-Six to appropriate nine-one-one fund balance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
I just had the one amendment today. You had appropriated fund balance last year for Billy Wynn to upgrade the radios and the equipment from the nine-one-one system. And this was the final piece to that that was not purchased until this fiscal year. So we just need to appropriate the fund balance and allow the expenditure in this fiscal year.
All right, we've heard the budget amendment request. What is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we accept Budget Provision Number Forty-Six as stated.
All right. Motion is second, end of discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda would be the consideration of a library dedication plaque. I believe you have it in there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, members of the board, this item presents for the board's consideration several different options for a library dedication plaque. You have several different examples of what a plaque could look like, both from municipal governments and county governments across the state. And those options in order are three different options, one, two, and three, with various nuances between the three. They're not numbered in any kind of way, but they're presented in the packet that you receive in order. And we present those for your consideration this morning.
All right, what you'll find is there are three options. Previous meeting, we decided that we wanted to have more names on the plaque for the library. The first option, the way I have it, were they're not numbered, and you may want to just number them so we can go through them. First option would be to identify the current chairman, vice chairman, the commissioners, and then you would have past commissioner, Mr. Wade Askew, Mr. Carlton Nickens, our clerk, our past commissioner-chairman for two thousand twelve, and when the library initiative was started, your county manager, and your previous county manager, who was a part of getting the library project started, and also your library board, the architect and the contractor. I would say that was number one. Number two-
Hold that, hold that one up, Hannah, I think you're talking about this one.
Right.
Yeah. Calling that one.
Call that number one. Number two, I'm looking at, it starts off with Graham Twine, two thousand thirteen. It does not have the year that he was chairman, but it has him as chairman, representing past chairman, Henry Jordan as vice chairman, and Wade Askew, Kenneth Jernigan, Carlton Nickens, which would have been the board at the time of the initiation of the project. Then your, the second would be the current board, which is Henry Jordan, chairman, Jack Owens, vice chairman, Commissioner Hohler, Horace, and Jernigan, and county manager, past county manager, clerk, our county attorney, and library board, and also your architect and contractor. That's number two. Number three would be the past board that initiated the project, Chairman Twine, Vice Chairman Jordan, Commissioner Askew, Jernigan, and Nickens, and then our current board, which would be Chairman Jordan, Vice Chairman Owens, Commissioner Hohler, Horace, and Jernigan, and our county manager, if you noted on this one, our past county manager was not included, and also the library board, architect, and contractor. So we have one, two, three, where the new plaque would be made up, and what is the pleasure of the board?
Well, I like number one, and the reason for that, if you look at all the other two, it has Kenneth's names twice. I don't think I would do that.
Yeah.
I do like the two-column thing that we have in Lisbon City over here. I do like that, too. And of course, my original thing was Wade Askew and Carlton Nickens, of course. And so I like, I like one if that's what we're going to do. I think that's more appropriate, and-
Any more discussion? Or I can make that a motion?
Well, we might have some other ideas. Might y'all have any other ideas?
Mr. Chairman, I'm okay with number one. Johnny, would you please, could you clarify the one you're talking about?
I like this right here where you have the two columns. I could do it like this, but you, in this case, you would take, you wouldn't have a D.C., but you would put those two names, and then you'd have, you know, coming down like this, and it would balance it. I think the numbers would actually balance itself. I like the design format of this, but I've been having it the other way, but-
Get that clerk. I think it's this one. Was it this one, Dylan?
This right here.
True blood.
Two-column one.
That has the two-column thing like this, where you then that allows you to go to the second thing over here, even when you go to the second line here, and you could put John and Toby, you know, one on one side, one on the other, that kind of still, like a double column all the way down.
To be sure, you got the right one, it's the one with the public safety building, two thousand seven.
But I think we, I mean, whichever design we go with, we need to let someone who is in graphic arts kind of look at it.
Oh, yeah.
And-
Give their opinion.
Give our opinion. And come back with some-
And what that, and what that two-column thing does, like we got, you know, it allows it to be consistent with this thing here, too. This category, you could do the same thing in this, and this also. But I, but what Linda said, I think, would be, you know, very important, too, that someone that's really in the graphics.
Allow them to have some design innovation.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I make a motion that we accept number one.
All right.
Second.
So motion is second, accept number one. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the public safety building dedicated two thousand seven as a format to be used.
With allowing the designer to give input.
Exactly.
Second that.
All right, the motion is second, that we'll accept the public works-
Safety.
Public safety design, but allowing the designer to have some innovation. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Next item on the agenda would be a consideration of the Gates County Juvenile Prevention Council County Plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Adrian Bradley. I serve as a chair for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for Gates County. And I bring to you the county funding plan. It's a single page. The two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen funding plan. As you see at the top, Gates County is scheduled to receive sixty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars. This is the amount that, same amount that we received last school year, and I think the previous year. But it is divi- But it is divided between our Alternatives for Youth program, the $32,831, and you see the local end kind, and then the Genesis and Restitution programs, the $28,468, with their local end kind of $5,700. The Alternatives for Youth program is set up in the school system. We have a social worker who does interpersonal skills, and she does some one-on-one counseling and skills with students who are recommended to her either through the court system or from within the school system, or the juvenile court counselors. The Genesis program is operated through the Cooperative Extension Office, and they do tutoring and enrichment activities after school. And so Ms. Reba Green-Holly could speak on that if you had questions regarding that particular program. Also, within their program, they handle the restitution program for the county. So we would ask that this has been presented to the council members. So we would ask that the commissioners would also give their approval.
All right. Thank you much.
All right.
If you have one question, for the tutoring program, are there any qualifications, stipulations, or is it open basically to whoever students want to come?
It's open to any male student, grade third up to 12th grade, and during any of the students that are going through the juvenile court system, automatically.
All right.
All right. And I have a couple of other documents that were shared with you, I believe, in your packets, or maybe on your table. One has a red flag there at the top from the N.C. Department of Public Safety. So it's two pages, and each are front and back. And this is the council's certification standards. What we do, each council, juvenile crime prevention council across the state, I'll wait just a minute, give everybody a chance to get a copy. Each council across the state is supposed to do their certification standards for each year. So we have help in getting this done through our regional consultant. And so I do have a place there that I would need to get a signature from the chairman of the county board of county commissioners. And you will see the third page of the document lists the people who serve on the council. And so I would ask, too, that maybe you would clarify for me, the commissioner that's gonna continue to serve with us.
Mr. Chairman, I, I am supposed to be serving there. I have, I have been absent. I apologize for that.
Well, I know you've had schedule changes, Mr. Owens, so I didn't know whether you would be able to continue. Our group normally meets midday. We meet about 12:30 in the day, and we meet every other month. So we meet about five times during the year unless special issues come up.
I, I will continue to...
Great.
Be the commissioner there, and I'll try to do a better job of attending.
Okay. I wasn't gonna tell on you, Mr. Owens. All right. Thank you. And then for your information, we have a juvenile crime prevention county plan, more of a report. It shows you the statistics for the council, the, we have the 2011-2012 full-year statistics and what type of issues were addressed. So this one, we don't, don't ask for a signature, it's just more information for you all. Unless you have other questions, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. We have two issues, two items to take action on. First, to approve the funding for the DJ, JDP, I believe this is a grant. And the second would be to approve the chairman signing the certification standards document.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the funding document and the chairman signing the document.
Second.
All right, it's been motion second. All, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, the next item on our agenda would be the consideration of a memorandum of understanding to explore and evaluate sharing services with the Gates County Board of Education. And I'm gonna turn that over to county manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this item presents for the board's consideration a memorandum of understanding to explore and evaluate opportunities for sharing services between the county and school board, where such sharing would utilize efficiency improvements and not impact student instruction. During this budget process, the superintendent of schools, Dr. Williams, and myself have been working very closely together. We believe that there are opportunities to share resources, to collaborate in a more meaningful manner for the betterment of school-aged child instruction, as well as for the, the public at large. This memorandum presents for your consideration the, the possibility of exploring what, what that sharing of services would look like. It would obviously not be instructionally based, it would be the support activities, such as I.T. and, and maintenance-type things. We do share equipment now on an informal basis. This would kick it up a notch, so to speak, to make a more formal means for us to share things across the, the two bodies, the school board and the county commissioners, and to, to realize those efficiency gains, and the cost savings, and the quality improvement for everyone, the, the public at large, as well as our school-aged children that are in the schools. So that's what this memorandum presents for your consideration this afternoon.
That's the point of clarification. When we entered into any sharing arrangements, it would be approved by the county manager for each case, you know, because it could be a lot of situations. I wouldn't have to come back to the board, but, in other words, our maintenance departments, they would not be working together without the county manager being aware of what the situation is and, and giving an approval of that.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. I, I would envision, and I can't speak for the, the, the school board, I would envision that for my purposes and working with the county board of commissioners, that I, I would really want y'all to be involved in this process, and to approve any sort of memorandum of agreement that would come out of this memorandum of understanding, so that you are very familiar with what is taking place with this other elected body, which is the school board, so that you're aware of what funds are being expended and how, and to, to do that, to not only be transparent, but to fulfill our fiduciary responsibility in the expenditure of funds countywide.
So any agreement would come back to us? Okay. And this is gonna be annually, one year annually?
The, the term of this M.O.U., this memorandum of understanding is for one year, and that's really the study period. There were a lot of things discussed in the budget process. The budget process takes a lot of time. After the budget process, and once school is released and they get through their integrated testing, I feel like there'll be more time for Dr. Williams and his staff to meet with me and my staff. And those memorandums of agreement would be coming in the, in the summer, in the early fall, before school starts back, or, or even in the fall, after school starts back. But it's really dependent on their schedule and, and how they can work with us and, and the staff that they have at the present time. But this is a, a one-year study document, and we hope to have more material coming to you once we're authorized to begin evaluation and study of sharing services.
Mr. Chairman, when I was reading over the document, the last whereas, and I think John has done a good job of describing it, the memorandum of understanding is intended to establish a commitment to explore, but then it says "and implement." So, you know, while this is a one-year document, and both groups are gonna be in the process, if they come across some, some great efficiency, or any efficiency for that matter, I want us to remember that the implementation word is in that also. So in that process, I hope we'll, when you discover something, that you'll bring it back to us, and so that, you know, if we discover something in 60 days, we don't need to wait a full year to implement it. So I'd like to just keep that on the board's mind.
All right. We have a memorandum of understanding, a M.O.U. before us, with the county and the school board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this memorandum of understanding.
Second.
All right, it's been motion second, that we accept memorandum of understanding. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Okay, the next item on our agenda would be the presentation of our fiscal year 2013 and '14 recommended budget.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this item presents for the board's review the presentation of the fiscal year '14 recommended budget, and should the board find it necessary to hold work sessions, the proposed dates as part of the, the schedule that we presented to you are May 7th and May 9th, and we need a public hearing set, and the proposed date for that is May 20th, 2013, and the ordinance needs to be read on June 5th to meet the statutory requirements of having an ordinance by the end of the fiscal year. With that being said, I'm going to review high-level detail of where this budget puts us, and I will read the, the manager's message for the record, for the benefit of the board and the public.
Excuse me, John.
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna be in this document?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On page three.
Thanks, sir.
It is with great pleasure that I present for your review and consideration the proposed budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013. I'm able to report to you that the county will discharge all of its financial obligations for the current budget year in a manner that will enable the county to leave the current fiscal year and enter into the next fiscal year in a healthy financial position. Rather than summarize the challenges of budget preparation in a time of austerity, when all governments are struggling to achieve balanced budgets, it is prudent, and at this time, to highlight the struggles of the men and women of Gates County. These men and women provide for their families in these times of economic uncertainty and constraint, and while so do, and participate in the governance of the county for the benefit of themselves and their posterity. It is them ultimately, the people of Gates County, that this budget seeks to emulate, sound in its resolve, resolute in its purpose, to serve the people of Gates County in an open and constructive manner within the resources that have been provided. This budget proposal includes that there be no property tax increase, utility rate increase, or any fee increase other than the establishment of a sanitary sewer fee schedule. The proposed general fund budget is $10,149,754, with a tax rate of 64 cents on a hundred valuation. Expenditures of note planned for the fiscal year include the addition of three new part-time deputies, an expansion of crime control and prevention efforts, including comprehensive community initiatives with a focus on health, healthy and safe communities, increases to the funds devoted to tech, to technology modernization, sustainability, and efficiency, protection of current investments with increased funding devoted to school-aged child education, early repayment of debt, funding for renovations to the historic courthouse using current monies without the issuance of debt, funding for a vehicle and equipment replacement program, reorganization of departments and offices to facilitate a more streamlined process for the benefit of customer service. I believe this budget will enable the county to perform its essential mission. While only modestly expanding services that are provided, the budget contains no funds for across-the-board or merit pay increases, nor additional retirement contributions to 401K funds other than those mandated by law enforcement. I'd like to express my appreciation to the board of commissioners for their participation and input in the budget process, and to the members of the county's management team, including agency leadership from all various constituent functional areas of county government, both elected and appointed, for the submission of their respective department and agency budgets. Copies of the proposed budget are being made available to News Media Gates County, and copies for the public to view will be available in my office, as well as the library and on the county's website following this meeting. Again, I'd like to turn your attention to page five with the key deliverables. I will read about the first three or four again. The budget is balanced, there are no new taxes or fees being proposed. We do not propose any budget appropriation from fund balance. The county is not using savings to provide for operational monies to balance this budget. The schools are being funded with a slight increase, and outside agency appropriations are being decreased due to new state funds, revenue being increased. There are some considerable changes to the health insurance, which are highlighted on the, the following page. This budget also consolidates and reorganizes county government, and it does provide for the early repayment of debt. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, county manager. You have the proposed budget for 2013 and '14. We will, we will take a look at that. We do have workshops scheduled for, what, May 8?
May 7th or 9th, at the pleasure of the board.
All right. We could, does I have two of one, or, or none, or you want to just have a...
What time are we considering? May 7th, if I have a conflict, but...
We, we set out 5:30 initially at our retreat, 5:30 to 7:30.
So, May 8th, or 7th?
Seven.
7th or 9th. It should be a Tuesday or a Thursday. The 7th is the Tuesday, and the 9th is the Thursday.
Tuesday's not a good day for me, that evening.
So we're gonna do these at 5:00, 7:00, something like that, in the afternoon, is what we're saying?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, the workshop is just to be for the commissioners to discuss any items of concern. You know, if we make adjustments, that could affect the budget being balanced, we just be aware of that. But it does give us the opportunity to come together and express any concerns we might have.
With the, with the 6th, be okay? May 6th?
That would be fine.
Let me see.
The 6th and the 9th, I found.
It'll land a 6.
May 6th will be Monday night. 7th will not work. We have an E and R board scheduled for the 8th. So, the 6th would be probably the night that we would be open for everyone. What time?
At 5:30.
5:30.
Would be the recommended time.
The date again?
May 6th. E and R is May 8th, by my calendar. And then again, you know, it depends on how many questions and concerns we have.
So the date you're using is what, Henry?
May, May 6th.
6th. 5:30.
It's 5:30.
5:30 or 6.
Okay.
The public hearing, would y'all like to establish a public hearing for May 20th? Go ahead and advertise for the public hearing.
7:00 P.M. It's what?
Would be a public hearing as part of the normal, regular board meeting. That evening would be the public hearing of the ordinance.
That would work. That's the night meeting.
That's good.
And then on June, what, when will we adopt the budget?
During the regular session, June 5th, on Wednesday, the 5th, in the morning, at 10:00 A.M. It'll be adopted. For those dates?
I already have them down.
The 20th.
It's already down.
Public hearing on the 20th? Seven. And also, we'll make the commissioners aware that on the 20th, we have a workshop with Clearscapes at 6 o'clock. One hour before.
20th.
Don't we have a board of equalization at 6, on the 20th?
You do count your closing day, May 6th, which with your other days, you should be able to just reconvene the clocks.
Now, May 20th, you said we close E and R?
At 4 o'clock? At four o'clock?
I think it was sixth.
So, we can just probably come in, close it, and then come over here.
I think it will be in the middle.
All right.
So, the Clearscapes meeting is gonna remain?
At six o'clock, that's it, six, we have both scheduled. Could we do it maybe fifteen minutes earlier?
Well, it's average guys would be at sixth.
Okay.
Keep a small conference, close, and we'll get in.
All right. Or we could have the same meeting in the same place. Just have them, and then we'll come here for the regular meeting. Workshop with Clearscapes at, in the Commissioner's room, and then come here. All right? Okay. Again, we have a budget, this is not time to approve it, but we'll look it over and we'll reconvene on May sixth. Thank you, Mr. County Manager. Next item on our agenda would be citizens' comments. And, uh, we have Sheriff Webb.
Good day, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners. I just wanted to take a minute to come here and just say something on behalf of the budget. First, the old saying is, if the buck stops here, it's with you all now. I would just like to say a few things about, if I could. First of all, I want to recognize our county manager, John Mendenhall, on the job that he has done working with the department heads. He and Sandy, her girls, Diane, all have done an excellent job bringing us in and letting us have a process and putting our two cents worth in on the budget. We may not have gotten everything that we're asking for, but we've been treated fairly, and that was something that I wanted to make sure that everybody understood. You all have a big job ahead of you. You have got to tweak it, tune it, whatever, to get it satisfactory for the citizens and for the, the benefit of the county. But I just want to take a minute to commend you all and commend our county manager and the job that he has done in preparing this budget. Now, everything you're gonna see in there, we don't expect to get every little thing. But, I would like to say this, again, I cannot recognize John and his staff, Sandy, the girls, Diane, and everything that they have done with that. And I kinda sit back at the back, thinking about things and looking at it. And I sit here and I count down you five that are sitting in the seat that you all have. And I think about it, we've got a teacher on one end that has nothing dumb involved in education all of her life. She's gonna teach you all a little bit about this budget. She's also gonna help kinda look out for the school board and, and Mr. Williams, Dr. Williams and his crowd, which is what's needed. I look at Ken, and I think about Ken, Ken's also a retired school board member. Worked for the school as a maintenance director with the garage for years. He's also gonna put his little tweak in there, but he's also a farmer. And he's gonna keep our county farmers in mind, and he's gonna know what they can do and what they can do to help them. I come to Mr. Horr. Mr. Horr, as you know, he worked at International Paper. He's been with a big business, been with a multimillion dollar business. He's now with a, working with the sawmills, but he has the financial knowledge to know how to tweak this budget. I come to my good friend, Jack. I think about Jack and I kinda look at his position right now, he's got the financial background. He also deals with colony tires, so he's all the time balancing tires and doing different things like that, but he always keeps everything rolling. So, Jack, we're looking to you to keep on things rolling right here when it comes to the budget. And then the last thing, I come to, to Mr. Jordan. Mr. Jordan, all I can say is, you're just gonna have to pray on it. And that's, that's all I can say. So, I wish you all the best with that. And again, thanks to John, Sandy, her staff, Diane, and all for what they have done. I speak not from, as all of the department heads, but just from the fact that we have had a process there. I've never been involved in anything like this since I've been sheriff. I've worked on, in Haski and did a few things over there, but I just want to commend our county manager and his staff for the job that they have done on this budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. And I will pray on it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Please excuse my impromptu, um, request to speak. I failed to sign in on the signing sheet, but I just want to make it short and brief and to echo Sheriff Webb's comments. It's been a pleasure to be able to have a parallel process and to be able to sit down at the, at a table to discuss what our needs are and to be able to be heard on what those are. It was also very good to get other department heads and other county departments to be able to see what we can do to help each other out instead of working together as five separate fingers and coming together as a fist to help with Gates County, to ensure that we're doing all that we can to help serve as citizens from what perspective programs that we run to help serve them in our prospective departments. So, short and brief, I want to thank you again, Sandy, John, and the Commissioners. We look forward to working with you as we continue through the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. Ashley?
Taylor.
Taylor.
Ashley Taylor, thirty-three, Lee Riddick Drive, Gates. Uh, got here a little late, so I'm sorry, also I didn't sign in. I just have a, a question of concern. There is a lot of rumors going around about our post office service. And because we are so di- diverse in our area, with small post office being Gates being the center, within your responsibilities, do you have any input into maintaining this post office in Gatesville as the main hub for this county?
I'm not aware of any input we might have in the postal service there, uh, self, I would say governing entity. But, uh, Commissioners, you all have any input on? I, I do know that there's gonna be some closings, some consolidations, some restrictions of hours. But as far as Gatesville being a main hub, or one other, Sunbury, Hobbsville, whatever, I'm not aware of, you know, what the future plans are. If any of the other Commissioners have any insight on that?
I'm not, I'm not aware, Ashley, of any, uh, changes. I would say the, the fact of the location to the courthouse and a lot of administrative things, I would think that the Gatesville, um, post office would surely be safe where, you know, where it is. I can't speak to the others. I do know the Roduka location, I'd heard conversation that it was gonna be closed down, or at least more limited hours. I think they're pretty limited already.
Well, I think it would be very, uh, advantageous to our community if you would keep your ears open, because if anything really comes down, they may just pull the whole thing out of Gates County altogether and put us in another county. And we'd become a satellite. That means our mail will leave here on a Friday, on a four o'clock, end up in somebody else's satellite, and then it's gonna get two days to move out of there if they take away this main hub out of this county. So, I just think it's to our advantage to maintain an ear to the changes to the postal service to make sure that we do not become second-class citizens to the postal service. Thank you, gentlemen, and madam ladies.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Reva Hawley, Cooperative Extension Director.
Good morning. I have several items. First, I'd like to speak as agency head and ditto what, um, Jeffrey and Ed have said about being open in the process of the budget this year. It was a new process and very welcomed. As a team player, we know we're taking our hits also. And to feed on what Ed said, I have pictures of Linda Hoffler in four H as a child. I had Ed Horr's son in four H. I have Jack Owen's daughter in four H. And I had Mr. Jordan's children in four H, along with some of them in our programs. So, they are all aware of what cooperative extension can do to help the people of Gates County. And to keep all of that in mind as you deliver over the program budget as we go forward. And we are a team player, and we understand we do have to take our hits. I would just ask that as we go forth as agencies and departments taking our hits, that we all are gonna have to look at how we do business, maybe change how we do business and streamline. And as we may have to change how we deliver services, or stop a service, or change how it's delivered, sometimes change upsets people. So, as you start maybe hearing some concerns, that you are supportive in the fact that we're trying to address these changes based on the budgets that we've been given to try to still provide as many of the services as we can. With that being said, I'd like to move on to, um, for you all to mark your calendar, August seventh, for the Commissioners Luncheon. And we usually have it right at noon when you finish your business. So, you might want to keep your agendas light that day. And depending on your budget, again, will depend on what you eat. So, that's August seventh, that's the, your first meet, your meeting that month. In addition to that, I just wanted to update you a little bit. You remember, I got a grant last year from the N C Rural Center to help work with young people, to engage them in the community. And I just wanted to update you on what they're planning. They've been working hard first in learning about the community and looking at needs and assessing needs and what resources are out there. And you would be pleased to know that they came up with the same needs that you all are addressing. They didn't know what the needs of Gates County were, but when they finished their needs assessment, they were the same needs. And then they started to learn about the resources that are out there and why some of those needs are here, and maybe why all the resources are not here to address. And then they had to come up with a project that they could plan and implement for their target audience. So, that project will start this month. And on May thirteenth, they're doing youth leadership explosion at the high school. It's open for any rising ninth grader, so a current eighth grader up to twelfth grade can attend. It will be free. The morning will be workshops, um, targeting youth issues dealing with employability, life skill development. They have a keynote speaker coming in that's talking about preparing themselves for life after high school and being productive, entertainment. And then from one to four, they will have, uh, festival activities out on the football field. They will be given lunch. We are targeting fifty youth right now, we have more, that's fine. But the first fifty to pre-register and show up on time will get lunch, T-shirts, and gifts. So, it's open to any youth. If you have church groups that you would like to bring anybody in the audience, the registration information will be out by next Monday. Just contact my office, and, uh, we can get you the information for the signup. The second part of their project is the Day of Caring, which will be the first one in Gates County, where youth will come together to do community service in the county. We've sent a letter out to all the agencies asking them, do you have a project that youth ages eight, grade and up could do from three-thirty to six-thirty on May thirtieth? We're gonna pair them up, and then they will actually do that community service project during that time. So, if you have, again, any youth in your church or other community groups that want to be a part of that, contact our office because we have to have you registered on who you are. You meet at our office, we send you out, you do your community service. This is a way of beginning to help kids understand about being engaged and giving back to their community. And then the last thing that they're doing is, they wanted to leave something in the county that they could drive by and see every day that they did that. So, as you know, two years ago in the Growing Gates Project, the Rosenwall School became, uh, pointed on the National Register. They will be purchasing a local historic sign that will be on the roadside to document that. So, those are their three strategies they were doing with that particular grant. And they've been a very engaged group of young people and very excited about having, uh, their voice heard. And I think that was all that I had. Any questions?
All right, we thank you, and, uh, we look forward to the August seventh dinner. And, uh, we'd like to see the, the same spread we've been using.
Remember, hot dogs, potted meat, pork loin. Remember which one you want.
Thank you, Reva. All right, um-
Mr. Williams?
Yes, Doc Williams, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, um, Members of the Board, and Mr. Mendenhall, good morning. Um, last time I was at the podium, I spoke about Plessy versus Ferguson, Brown versus Board of Education, Sputnik, civil rights, and of course, N C L B. And what Uncle Sam was doing to us, to put us in a position, position to appropriate money to agencies and the school system. So, today, I, I just want to say thank you. I get my ideas as I walk through the school. I, um, you're supposed to give your name when you come up here. I live in the schools, I sleep at home. And that happens to be in Hobbsville. But I do have something here I'd like to, I'd like to read to you. And I want to define what is a successful student. A successful student is an individual who is able to experience a high degree of success in a variety of challenging academic and social endeavors, kindergarten through twelfth grade. A successful student is also an individual who matures into a responsible citizen, a productive member of society, a person with impeccable character, and one who adds a great deal of value to the community. As an educator, it is my primary responsibility to ensure that each student has the ability to reach his or her social and academic potential. This can only occur when there is a carefully developed instructional program, a meticulously developed curriculum, and a clear focus and vision for the school district. As the superintendent, it is my direct responsibility to ensure that our school district provides this type of challenging and appropriate educational program. To accomplish my opening comments, the Gates County School District, along with the Gates County Board of Commissioners, has illustrated this commitment by providing the students with the opportunities to compete in this global society. To elevate our students' achievement and growth scores equates to no more steps backwards. Together, we're taking steps forward. With new educational reform, the way we teach, the expectations we hold for our students, and the way we measure success is centered on the strong partnership that both boards exhibit. We appreciate your willingness to support the schools and the safety of our students. Mr. Mendenhall and I have formed a relationship built on trust, honesty, and respect. We will continue to represent our boards and the county of Gates, North Carolina, with integrity. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Doc Williams. And, uh, we do appreciate the job you're doing as well as, as our current county manager. Thank you so much. All right, uh, there are no other comments. We'll, uh, have our Commissioner comments. And I believe we started this in last time, so, Mr. Hoffler, we'll revert back to you.
Well, it's certainly nice to see each of you here today, and feel free to come for us at any time. With that, of course, we all have a big task to worry about, is the budget. And we do have limited resources, as most of Ranger, as reminded us today. But we're going to try to make the most of those. Certainly, education is very dear to my heart, I've worked in it for thirty-six years. And if we don't educate our children, what future do we have? I also, very interested in four H, as I was a member. That's the one thing, like being, living here all your life, everybody knows you. So, uh, but we're going to try to do our best and to fulfill the needs of all our citizens, whether they're the young or the old, um, the disadvantaged, the privileged. We are going to be able to work for everyone. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Horr?
My turn, huh?
Your turn.
I'm not gonna say too much, maybe?
Uh, Commissioner Jorgensen is in Washington, D.C. today, so.
Trying to get us some dollars then, right?
He's trying to help us out.
I'm glad to see everybody here and, and, uh, glad you come out. And it really does my heart good to hear some of the things that have been said with some of the people out there today. It, um, especially, I think that things are changing, the concept's changing, and it's, and it's really great to me personally, when I see some of the things and I know that are tried and true. personally, when I see some of the things and I know that are tried and true that I've seen in businesses over the years start coming into play. And, uh, and I appreciate Mr. Mendenhall, uh, for that. It, um, is quite, rewarding to your soul when you see that and you see one that's focused, that has that concept and, and understands the concepts that, uh, a lot of those things have made our country great. Everybody needs a board stretcher, everybody needs a money stretcher. And, uh, I think we're focused on that, but we do have limited resources, but we can use the resources that we have to get the best bang for our buck. And I think we're working on that. And, uh, the main thing out of that whole situation is amplifying the, this aspect of teamwork. And I believe that's beginning to happen there. And, um, recognizing that we're all in it together, trying to get the same common good. Uh, a lot of times when you centralize things, people, uh, and they work good. It has for me, but a lot of times you see people get theirself in silos and they stay in those silo and it's me against you. Well, that's, it is a personal thing and an individual thing, but when you start working as a team and people recognize, believe me, they will recognize a team before they will recognize an individual. If you don't believe it, you think back at some of the things that has happened. And, uh, and I really believe that and I'd like to see that concept as being applied. And with what has been said here this morning, you can tell that that's, that's there. And, uh, as the school board, the county government and all, we wanna win. And I love to win. I don't like to lose. But I know how to lose when I do lose, and you're gonna lose in life. And you learn from those mistakes and you move on. And I just appreciate what has been said this morning and thank you, John.
Yeah, alright. Always nice to hear. Well, a couple of unusual things have happened today. We're, a governmental meeting in the word efficiency was mentioned. And, uh, and we actually are gonna sign a document that says that we're gonna, we're gonna work hard in that matter, so I'm encouraged by that. Um, look at my friend Cal Bryan over here, and, and the second unusual thing is Cal, it's not twelve o'clock. We're not out yet, but we're getting close. Um, I do want to make a comment about, um, the people who came and, and spoke at the podium today that, uh, have been working hard with their departments on the budget. Uh, and you're all still here, so I thank you, uh, for your comments today. There, it's, it's not lost on my eyes that I see great teams in Gates County. I mean, in, out, in every department. I mean, I know the things that, uh, that you folks do. And I'll just, uh, Reba, your program is tremendous, has been for years and years and years, and that goes for everybody. Ed, your department, um, Ed's department was fully engaged last week in, um, Wounded Warriors. I went out there and saw a little bit of what they were doing for just a few minutes. And, uh, that group is to be commended. I know you had a lot of outside support outside your, uh, your men, but your men were well involved. Um, John and Henry tell us all the good things that, that the Department of Social Services does. And, uh, from my daughter, I hear what's going on out, out at the school. And, um, anyway, just tremendous, but it goes all the way down to, uh, the personnel here in the administrative, um, area and the departments here within the county government. I like the word that Johnny used, uh, team. And I believe we've got a good team all across the board. And I'm really encouraged, um, that we are, we appear to be moving in a good, solid direction. And I hope that this budget, um, what eventually comes out of it will be beneficial to the county as a whole and, uh, and will make your, uh, departments continue to be strong. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Jack. Thank you all the Commissioners. I just wanted to thank everyone for being here and showing your interest in, uh, local government because when you have interest, certainly it keeps us a little bit sharper. It makes us wanna do those things that we know should be done. Jack, even all, we should have said some, some great things about our employees. And, and one thing, uh, you find out in the, uh, informant world is that you surround yourself with good people and you allow them to grow and to, uh, better themselves. And when they do that, uh, certainly it's gonna be a benefit to whatever business you're in. Uh, and we can see that in the county. We have a couple of employees this month who have done an outstanding job, and I just wanna recognize them to kinda reflect the type of people that we have working for us. Uh, we got a report, and it's in your package from North Carolina Deaner, uh, commending Timothy Hedgepath for the outstanding job that he has done in maintaining the sewer spray field and many of the other, uh, audit check items that they look at when they go into a sewage facility, uh, to evaluate how well it's being kept. And they mentioned his name in their report. And, uh, so I wanna give, uh, kudos to Timothy, he's not here. But John, let him know that we recognize that he went the extra mile, if you will, and that is to be commended. Uh, also, I wanna recognize Ms. Sandy Pittman, uh, for continuing to, uh, better herself and, and, uh, make herself a more valuable employee. She committed, completed the county administrative course at the University of North Carolina School of Government, for administrative services. So that certainly, uh, is valuable to the county. And I, uh, thank you for doing that. And, uh, the citizens of Gates County should be very appreciative as well. So, you know, this board works hard and I wanna commend the board. Uh, we just don't sit here at the meetings, we spend some, some oil, burn some oil at night sometimes. And, uh, and we do wanna try to do the best we can for the citizens of this county, for our employees, and for all those we associate with, our school board and so forth. So, we thank you again for coming and, uh, have a great day. We need a motion to recess.
I need a motion that we adjourn.
Recess.
Recess.
Until May sixth.
No, we gotta go to closed session.
I'm not, we need a motion to go in closed session.
Make a motion, we go in closed session.
Second.
Second, alright. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Are we going to deck just a break?
We're ready, Jason. Alright, we entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
So move.
Second.
Alright, motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay. We have three motions that we want to bring forward to vote on. First motion to authorize County Manager, County Attorney to carry out the instructions given in closed session.
Uh, so move.
Second.
Motion is second, that we authorize the County Attorney to move forward as discussed in closed session, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Alright, the second motion is we want to authorize, uh, Commissioner John Horr to count, to carry out instructions given in closed session.
So move.
Second.
Alright, so motion is second, Commissioner Horr, uh, to carry out those instructions, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Alright, third motion, we will authorize the County Manager, uh, to accomplish the implementation regarding personnel as discussed in closed session.
So move.
Second.
Alright, so the motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Alright, um, if there's no other business that we're aware of, we'll entertain a motion to recess until May sixth, uh, workshop at six o'clock.
So move.
Five thirty.
So move.
Alright, we have the motion, the second.
Second.
Alright, motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Alright, recess.